And we'd like to be on the offense rather than the defense. And it took a while to turn that around, but I think we have arrived. I also want to thank the deans for their leadership of their respective schools and also the faculty, because the faculty chairs and the faculty members in each department have played a very important role in that turnaround. And it wouldn't be without the cooperation of the entire institution that we would have accomplished that kind of success. So my hat is off to the entire institution for a success that I think is as major as issuing seventeen million dollar worth of bonds or getting a Moody's investment grade rating. This is really what we're all about, the academic program, and it has now been recognized by the Western Association. And I want to thank Bill, but also the deans and the faculty for a job extremely well done, and the support staff for the kind of support that they've provided. It really is an historical time for this institution, in my opinion.
Ken?
Nathan, you say we face four hundred and sixty thousand dollar shortfall. If that is implemented with that point of the contract in America, over what period of time would that be scaled in? Is it immediate, or is it over what period? Is it grandfathered in, how long?
That's a good question, and I think I would have to defer to Adeline, who's sitting right behind you to answer that.
I believe that it comes for immediate elimination, so we would live out the academic year ninety-four, ninety-five, but ninety-five, ninety-six, we would lose it.
The whole shortfall?
The entire amount.
It's unusual for the administration and the students to stage a rally jointly sponsored, but that's exactly what we did for financial aid. We were all there together, we feel very strongly about it, and our students generated some eight hundred letters that went to the members of Congress asking them to reconsider the cuts in federal aid to education, and we all feel very strongly about that. Thirty percent of our freshmen are first-generation students, and seventy-five percent of our undergraduate students receive financial aid. Half of our students rely on federal funding to make the margin of difference for them to be able to attend this institution. And if we cut that out, we're going to cut the ability of those students to pursue their dreams and receive their education and move into what will be, what we hope would be equality. And I think it's that serious a matter, and if you feel strongly about it, I would urge you to write to your senators and members of Congress regarding this issue. I think the throw out aid to education is to skip a beat, and if we skip a beat and miss a generation, we'll never make it out in this society. I'm absolutely convinced of that.
Okay, any further questions?
Just to comment on the WASC visit, when we had the luncheon with one of the visitors, he really would like to package our delivery system and take it back to his institution. The other one I thought was an interesting challenge was that we seem to be doing a good job of teaching people at many different levels, age levels and education levels, and he challenges us to become the experts in field and to not proceed with training, almost a how-to here is how you go about teaching people at this level and that level, and also how to train people to teach. That was a very positive, a positive thing, and also a challenge to us to really become the teacher leaders, how to teach people at very many different levels.
I talked to one of those representatives of WASC, and he had actually read that whole volume that Bill took. Really, he had lenses about the science. The guys at Mount Polymont who did that. Bill, that was a terrific afternoon, your part. Okay, I guess we'll move on. Myrna, are you ready?
This morning, the Student Affairs Committee met. Trustees that were represented were Roger, and Ida, Doug, and Ken, and myself. We met with the staff of Student Affairs, or some of the staff, it's a huge staff. So we met with a few of them, plus Patty Moreno, the student representative, so we were happy to hear from a lot of different parts of Student Affairs. I think probably if you were to choose one word to describe what's happening right now in Student Affairs, it would change. First of all, we now have a figurehead in the Student Affairs Department. Lynn the Hightower is our figurehead dean. The actual work being done is taken over by Dr. Loretta Romani, who is the acting dean as of, I think, February of this year, to free Lena for doing some special things that he needs to do with President Morgan in the planning process that's going on right now on campus. So Dr. Loretta Romani is doing a wonderful job, assisted by Ruby Cordova, and so we heard from both of them this morning also. Patty, in her report to us, answered some questions that we had specifically about the Greeks on campus, telling us that there were three fraternities and three sororities, some very interesting things about their goals on campus. They are quite academic-oriented, as opposed to what you might think. They also are service and charity-centered, and the third thing that they worked on is relationships between students and also between students and faculty. And that's a real thriving and important part of this campus. A change in the area of public safety and security, that department was never under our Student Services, our Student Affairs Department, and now it is. So we have a new area that we're working with, and we'd like to just tell you that in May, there's going to be a team here, an audit team, to look at our campus, and they're going to look at about twenty different things about our security and safety requirements, the legal kinds of things that we have to adhere to, the status of things. Not that we have big problems right now, because we're pretty careful, I think, in our security and our safety right now. However, we do need to be aware that with the amount of technology, the kinds of things that we have on campus as far as equipment, we do need to be ahead of the game in protection and safety, safety-conscious areas. We also heard about our health services. Something new, another change would be that we're looking into contracting those services out. So not only will the actual services, but the administration be contracted out. Campus ministry, we also learned the change with Judy George's leaving, and there will be a re-envisioning committee to look at the campus ministry, job description, the purpose and the structure of that area. Again, I would like to say thanks to Lynn, who still has his fingers in what's going on, even though he's not actually doing the day-to-day things, that's being taken over by very capable people. I'm sure if you have any questions about the written report or about our meeting this morning, I would be happy to try and answer those, and I'd be curious to know.
Any questions, Myrna? We'll move on. Gina, are you ready?
Yes. You'll recall that two consultants from Brakely, John Price Jones, were here at your board meeting last October and conducted some discussions with the trustees in two breakout sessions regarding your views of our fundraising and your role as board members. This, that audit had been discussed with the Board Development Committee in some detail, with the Senior Management Group, and also with our staff in university relations. And you also have in your packet, it's on the right-hand side of the folder, a brief outline of the steps, the action steps that we've taken in the last few months in response to their development audit and in discussion with and working with the people at Brakely John Price Jones. We are taking steps to reorganize our staff to be more effective, to add a couple of staff if some of our plans are approved that are incorporated within the budget proposal you'll be looking at today. We're beginning a formal planning process for the next several years, and we are evaluating the effectiveness of all of our programs in university relations, and you will, over the coming year, see some changes there. In time, despite the fact we've had two vacancies in key professional positions in our apartment this year, one for four months and one for five months, we are projecting a possible record year in fundraising for ninety-four, ninety-five, in both dollars raised and number of donors. And we appreciate all of your part in that. Thank you.
Any questions, Gina?
I would just like to take out the possible. She said a possible record. We're headed for a record.
I was trying to cover myself, didn't I, Steve?
We're headed for a record, Gina, on June thirtieth.
All right.
Peggy, are you ready with your special report?
What's the best way for me to get over to that?
To come right around this. And in the meantime, we'll give several other reports. I'd just like, while you're getting set up, Peggy, make a comment that most of you know Peggy started with us as director of alumni relations, and a couple of years ago, she had an opportunity to move into the Education Department and to head up our teacher training program. Peggy has breathed new life into that program and has brought it back up to the level that Laverne has had a reputation for over the years, and we are grateful for her leadership. She brings energy, intelligence, and a real commitment, and all three of those she has utilized to the fullest, and we're grateful for that, Peggy.
Thank you very much.
You didn't expect that, but I had to fill the time. Yeah, when we meet in our new boardroom, this will not have to happen.
That's right. Okay, I would like to, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation today. I'm going to be speaking about one particular program in the Education Department, but I feel that I need to let you know what the Education Department is made up of, and I am just one part of that. We have programs in child development, child life, school counseling, special education, a master's in education, and the teacher education program. And what I'm going to highlight today is a Center for Teacher Leadership that we have developed through our School of Education, our Department of Education, and the teacher education program working together. I will say, Steve said a little bit about our program. We have fifty, I believe this year, we have fifty-five students in Bakersfield that are full teacher education members, and we also have on campus, have had about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five that have gone through our program this year. This is approximately five times the number we had six years ago. And I think if that helped you to understand, we are realizing a great increase in numbers for various reasons. Part of it is due to the fact that the state schools cannot handle everybody, but I personally think the biggest reason is the program. And what has been exciting, there are a few people from the Bakersfield area here, and I feel you're aware that we have become quite well-known. Stuart Packard, an alumnus of Laverne, said, "You know, Peggy, about six different places I've gone, and they know who you are." I said, "It's because I'm up there teaching, and then our students get out of the school," so that's quite exciting. The thing that's wonderful about Laverne's teacher education program is that we do offer a quality product, and we are looking at the teachers that we prepare as going out into the schools and providing leadership. They provide leadership, and many times they're working under superintendents and principals that have gone through Tom Harvey's educational doctorate. And so it's a very wonderful thing when these things work together. One of the things that we found was that, however, was that as once students leave us, they really don't have the resources through our department to expand and meet some of the needs that they reach and they need when they're out in the schools. We used to prepare teachers to teach almost, go in the classroom, shut the door, teach the students. Nowadays, our teachers are asked to do many different things. They have to work in a collaborative mode, they have to serve on many committees, and we called on some teachers who are leaders from school districts to work with us, and we formed a board. And it, and we gave ourselves a name, and we are called the Center for Teacher Leadership. We have a mission. And that mission is to provide patients the new relationships and new responsibilities brought about through restructuring. And as for those of you that aren't familiar with this education kind of language, restructuring is going on throughout California and through most of the United States. We're bringing teachers into the whole decision-making fold and part of the schools. The first priority for the training act, act to someone dead. Bill Slipty, Bill Slipty was our keynote speaker, and then probably the most exciting thing about that particular program was that in the afternoon of Saturday, it went Friday night and all day Saturday, we had teachers from the whole area here come and give presentations that were meaningful for teachers. We had two hundred participants, and I want you to know, we did a wonderful thing. We ended up giving away a computer at the end, and we gave it away at four-thirty on Saturday, and you had to be present to win. So La Pedro Hall was filled at four-thirty on Saturday. We kept people there. We will, we then did a workshop in the summer, and I'm going to ask someone to share with us in just a moment about that workshop. We invited teachers from throughout the valley to present applications. It included a statement from them, the person, a statement from the principal, a statement from a peer, people from superintendent or their designee. And we selected twenty-five teachers to participate in a small institute this summer. And at that time, Dr. Terry Deal was the lead speaker at that, who has done some interesting work in this whole area of teacher leadership as well. And then Tom did a thing or change at the end that was very helpful, too. But I don't want to talk about that, because one of our participants is here to do that for us today. And if you look in your packet, you're going to see the brochure for our coming conference. This is the conference we had last April, but it's going to be coming up. And on the front of it, we have a participation in our summer institute. And I would like her to take this opportunity to share with you some of the insights, and what it meant to her, okay? Well, I got to make sure there's a that and come back to Tom. But I don't know if you've ever come to a point where, in your life, where it's been a pivotal, pivotal experience, where you have jumped off perhaps an idea, or someone has said something to you, or a book that you've read. This Center for Teacher Leadership did that for me. It was a stepping stone for me to dream and realize, and now I have some goals, and I'm very excited about it, and I keep talking, talking, talking. But I, one thing that I would like you to know, that it's an experience that will enrich and give the university an excellent name, and I am extremely pleased that I was a part of the five-day workshop in the summer.
Your plan was approved by the City of Laverne, and with the completion of the project across the street, of the expansion of the Wilson Library, and the construction of the Landis Academic Center, we will have completed that master plan. And so about eight months ago, we decided it was time to look again at our master plan for the campus, and we had several meetings of the Campus Master Planning Committee, which includes some trustee representation. And we agreed at that time that we would like to retain Mark Von Wadke at the Clermont Environmental Design Group to assist us with that process. And Mark is here today to give us a progress report on where we are in terms of developing a new master plan. It's important that the trustees be involved in this. And while we know some of the needs of some of our programs, and we can plug those into that master plan, we've not really done what I call the micro-master planning yet. We're going to be working with all of our academic and administrative departments over the next year or so to really try to very clearly articulate and define the needs, space needs, of those departments. So when we talk about master planning, we've got some people who get rather excited on the campus, because they know that their specific needs have not yet been addressed. That's absolutely true. But what we're looking at is the macro picture right now. What do we think would be available? And then we'll move down to the next level of moving into the micro-planning to say, where will we put the specific needs that we envisioned? There have been two major developments that have contributed to our master plan. One is that we have, we have written to you that we have obtained a lease on the Baum Warehouse, which is a fifty thousand-plus-square-foot facility just on the other side of E Street, across from the Oaks Residence Hall. That opens up a great deal of space for us on campus, and we'll be moving most of our campus services, maintenance, housekeeping, the press, our purchasing department, over to that new facility, which will open up what we call the Far West Warehouse, and we're looking to remodel that Far West Warehouse and move the Art Department and the Communications Department into that facility over the next two years. So we're always working with a domino effect when we're talking about facilities at the University of Laverne, and acquiring a lease on the Baum Warehouse really tipped over a number of dominos for us and opens up a lot of space that will be well-utilized. Mark has been working with us over a long period of time, and we're pleased that he's here this morning to give you an update on our master planning process. Mark?
Thank you. Shall I just speak from here and everybody? Can you see and hear me, or would you prefer me up there?
I think some of them would rather have you right up here, up in the corner.
I've gotten a lot of good input from the committee, from various heads of academic units. Brian Early has been a tremendous help in giving me access to a lot of the information that we needed, and we've also recently gotten some comments back from the City of Laverne, which have been helpful as well. What you have in this document is a table of contents of the draft report itself, which I have here, and if you want to look at it more closely, you can, but basically, the initial part of that deals with purpose. We've tied it to your strategic plan, to comments from the last report, various city guidelines, and the City of Laverne specific plan. In analyzing the campus, we've looked at two things, the programs as they are evolving, and as President Oring pointed out, they continue to evolve, but we took in, took stock of what the needs of the various units were, as they expressed them. We also took a good look at the facilities. We got aerial surveys, which we have been working with in a digital form, and have been able to inventory key things such as the campus infrastructure, building use, and many things like that. From that, we've summarized opportunities and constraints, but more important than what I want to share with you today is what we're beginning to see as a long-term vision. And I'd like to just highlight some of the key points of that, and then go into the phasing strategy that we see possible here. When you are talking about a master plan, you're really going into uncharted territory, and I always find, just as in navigating and sailing, you have to get a fix on some distant point, and then you can navigate towards it. And so what we tried to do was to look far ahead and see that effort on the areas between B and E Street, primarily between First and Second Street, but also extending northward from that. That seems to be an area that we can fit into the campus fabric very well, and it seems to be an area that the city is amenable to having the university expand. Another key, and I should mention, too, as Steve's already mentioned, the Baum Warehouse across the street, across E Street, is a very key piece in that it enables a lot of movement on the campus in terms of using various spaces. Another thing that you will hear me mention later on is the possibility of acquiring some land nearby where the campus could have recreation facilities. If that were done, it would open the site of the present baseball field, soccer field, possibly the tennis courts, to more campus development that would be very centrally located. So there are opportunities or possibilities we're looking at to acquire additional campus, adjacent or, additional lands adjacent or near the campus. The other thing we're looking at doing is increasing the density of the existing campus. There are places where the uses could be intensified, for example, redevelopment of the site around the Kilo Building and the old maintenance building is a prime opportunity. What we're really looking for are ways in which the campus can respond to what some of you maybe have been reading about as Pile Wave Two. It's really the babies of the baby boomers who are now becoming college-age. There's a projected forty-three percent increase in the number of high school students, and we're seeing them start to come onto the college market. And we're also seeing a diminishing of the state resources in terms of the state college and university system to be able to accommodate these. So the other part of this intensification, as I mentioned already, is the possibility of using some of the recreation land on campus more intensively. And then another notion we're investigating and partnering, I would see that staying, but the north, where it extends north, C Street, I think that could be removed. The next thing that might be done is to increase accommodations for residential students. As we expand the campus, there will be a need to increase student housing. We have a discussion, quite a long discussion on this in committee meetings, and obviously that, whatever happens here, will be driven by the need and the patterns, but there seems to be a strong consensus that the campus wants to remain, to retain its residential character as much as possible, student residential character. So that could be accomplished by refurbishing student housing, and there's also a possibility of expanding housing, adding a dormitory along beneath the avenue near the chapel there. You see a building site originally, I think in the previous master plan that was identified, but for academic purposes, we see that possibly more appropriate for student housing, and move the academic functions more towards the center of campus. But nevertheless, the options are there. At some point, and we just put it into the process, here is step twelve, the remodeling of the chapel is on the agenda. Obviously, that could happen almost any time when there are funds. Step thirteen identifies a key step here that would take the campus probably into a whole new transformation, and that has to do with relocating the baseball and the soccer field to better facilities nearby. We've been looking at property nearby, and there is some land available from the Metropolitan Water District on the south side of Arrowhead Highway, not far from the campus, and it may be, maybe possible to acquire this.
Really thinking of building the old athletic field and so forth off campus away, used to facilitate more integration of needed classrooms, but I understand that all the buildings are completed across the street. They'll be filled the night that they're complete. It always tells me that, you know, we're right up against a barrier of available space, which I think is probably as much a planning problem as any we have. I would like to, like to see the planning process be fully embedded in size, scope, and location, so that as we make decisions with respect to a master plan like this... so that as we make decisions with respect to a master plan like this, which is a very good one, I have no objection to it at all. But I think looking down a little further, we need to know what we want to be ourselves.
Great segue. Great segue into item number 11. Thank you, Dick. It's true. We face two problems with physical master planning. One is that we are landlocked and currently working at overcapacity with our spaces. So part of this master plan that we're recommending will simply meet the needs of what we already have in terms of student body, staffing, and service needs. The next step then is to look ahead at how large Laverne ought to be. And in preliminary conversations, I think most of us agree that we would not want to see a traditional undergraduate student body of more than 1,200 to 1,400. That would be 200 to 400 larger than it is today. We still want to remain a small institution. There would be some economies of scale by increasing our enrollment, another 200 or 300 at the traditional undergraduate level. But that will be a piece of the strategic planning process. We had started the master planning process. And in the fall, I started talking with the university community about launching another strategic planning process. It was met with a rather overwhelming sigh by most people, saying, "Our plates are already too full. We don't need to throw the planning process on top of it." But I am a firm believer that an organization to be successful into the future must have a plan and a vision for what it wants to be. And so I have, up to this date anyway, prevailed. And we are moving ahead with a strategic planning process. Some things I negotiate, this one I do not negotiate. Part of that process was to ask Lynn Hightower to move out of Student Affairs for a while and really work full-time as my agent for the planning process. And we have now worked with the Senior Management Group and we're working with our university council to launch a strategic planning process that will run through the remainder of this year and all of next year. The difference in this strategic planning process with the one that we did in 1990 and '91 is that it was a rather centralized process in '90 and '91. We worked with our university council, which is representative of all of the components of the institution. But they met as a central group and some subcommittees and really created the strategic plan under which we're now operating. And it was a five-year strategic plan. I think the university has now reached a point in its own development where it's appropriate to go back to units and ask them to create strategic plans for the next five to six years. And that's what we're doing. We're starting centrally with our university council to look at parameters and tenets and the mission of the institution. What is it we believe about the University of Laverne? What do we think our mission is? Is it still what it was in '90 and '91? And then ask each of the academic units and administrative units to work in teams to create their own strategic plans for their areas. And then in the fall of next year, we're going to come back together with those plans and work with the university council to weave them into an institutional strategic plan. An enormous amount of work, but one that I think is absolutely essential if we're going to continue the F-word trajectory of the institution and allow us in 2001 to be where it is we want to be, rather than someplace we really didn't intend to go. And part of that will be to look at numbers. How many students do we want? How do we want to service them? What kinds of programs, what kinds of staffing needs do we have? Another major piece of this strategic planning process is how will we allocate our resources?